Thank everybody for being here tonight. If you can all please rise for the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be given by Father Forbes sermon of St. James Episcopal Church.
Mayor and council members, thank you for having me. For all those who wish, let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we thank you for the abundance of your gifts you have bestowed upon the people of this community, for the bounty of this city and the beautiful land in which it resides. We pray this day for your wisdom and strength upon our mayor and our city council to make fair, meaningful, and timely decisions for our city of Fairhope. Be with them and give them a spirit of wisdom to govern amidst the conflicting interests and issues of our time. Give them compassion to understand the needs of the people who live here and of one another. Give them a sense of your justice so that they may do what is in good and right in your eyes. May a sense of peace and trust and rest be upon this place and this group of officials we have entrusted to lead us. We also pray for our first responders and all those who put their lives in danger so that we might live in safety and peace, for all those who are caring for the sick and the suffering in our community, the doctors, nurses, caregivers, and therapists. We also pray for your gentle and healing arms to be around those who suffer and continue to suffer from this virus that is still in the midst of our community and our world. Comfort those who suffer and grieve from losses and help us all to have the sense and compassion for our fellow man that we can protect from the further spread to the best of our ability. All this we pray through your Son, Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Father Sermon. Appreciate that. Council, we need to amend the agenda following the work session and add as item 25, a resolution to approve the temporary job position of the horticulturist. So if I can entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add that resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor of amending the agenda to add that resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay. We have amended the agenda. Thank you. Okay. We next come to appointment of council member for place four. What we will do is we will ask for, I will ask for nominations from the council. If we have more than one nomination, I would entertain a motion for the election of one or of the other, whoever you choose, and we will take votes such as that. So I will ask for nominations from the city council for the appointment to place four.
I'd like to nominate Jay Robinson.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Well, it's just a nomination. Do we have any other nominations from the council? I will close nominations. I will ask for a motion for the appointment of Jay Robinson to place four.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, you know, I think, I think most people are here for this particular situation, and I'm sure if Robert could have stayed on, he would have. But I think the bill order has put us in a good position with a good man and somebody that's definitely qualified, maybe overqualified, for this particular position, and I think that the city is well represented by Jay Robinson.
Councilman Conyers, do you have any comments?
I'm just be excited to have him back. I hated to lose Councilman Robert Brown, but I know that Jay was one of the most, if not the most popular council person when he was serving last term, and I certainly would like to have him back.
Councilman Boone, any comments?
Well, actually, I was looking forward to having him sit down here, so I hope everybody feels the same way I do. And I hated losing Robert, but life moves on, so we got in a very good position to have a number one man back in the spot.
I also hated to lose Councilman Brown, and as, as I stated in that late October meeting, October 25th or 26th, I believe it was, Jay's last council meeting, you know, I meant what I said, and he did a fantastic job. I thought he made great decisions, a very wise young man he is. I've been asked a lot of questions about, you know, how I made this decision, and I want to share some of those thoughts with everyone. You know, first of all, you know, I've been asked, well, did you consider other people? Yeah, I considered, I considered every person in the city. I mean, I went through my mind of who would be qualified and who I thought would do a good job, and I had a, you know, a fair number of people in my mind. And I was even contacted by no less than, I believe it was somewhere between five and seven people that offered their services, and I've talked to them about the position. We also announced the vacancy at the last council meeting, as we were supposed to do, declared the place four seat vacant. But, you know, the name that came to mind first was Jay Robinson, and I think that, I think he's simply the most qualified person in the city. And I called Jay and asked him, and he didn't give me an answer right away if he'd be willing to serve, if he was chosen, and he thought about it, and then he told me a little bit later that he would, he would be honored to serve if he was elected to this position. I was asked, well, would you consider people that had run for office? And I said, well, I did. I have considered those people. Like I said, I've considered everybody. But when you run for office, if you do not win, that doesn't mean that you're the next qualified person to fill that office. I mean, I gave the example on the radio this morning, if everybody ran unopposed and one person had opposition and that person got 20% of the vote, does, do you name that person to fill the empty seat, or do you name the person that you think is the next qualified person? So for me personally, I think that Jay, had he run for reelection, would have won in a landslide. I think he is, I mean, it's just amazing that we, I feel like we have the most qualified person that's willing to do it. So I think we're going to take this vote. I hadn't heard of any other nominations, so I'm pretty certain he's going to get it, and I just think that we couldn't be more fortunate to have somebody of Jay's caliber to serve up here with us on this, on this city council. And it's a, it's a sad day to lose Robert. It's a very happy day to, to receive Jay Robinson. And, you know, the other part is that I, I was asked about considering other candidates, and, you know, the state of Alabama has given the authority to make this appointment to the city council, and everyone up here was duly elected by the majority of the citizens to make these decisions, and they, we were elected and entrusted with these decisions. And we're not going to run from that duty. That's exactly what we're going to do. And, you know, I think that's, I think we're just following due process. Any other comments? Okay. Hearing no further comments, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, motion carries. Congratulations. We will now ask the Honorable Judge Jody Bishop to administer the oath of office. Counselor? Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. I, Jay Robinson.
Hi, Jay Robinson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Alabama.
The Constitution of the state of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Of Fairhope City Council.
Of Fairhope City Council.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Do you have a vote?
Right there.
I made one for whoever said.
There's one here. Make it warm. We're on item three, Councilman. Okay, item three on tonight's agenda will be to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings which were held on the 22nd of February, 2021. Do you have any additions, deletions, or changes to those minutes as submitted? Entertain a motion to approve them as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Mayor Sullivan, your report, please.
Good evening, thank you. Welcome, Councilman Robinson. So I just have three things tonight that I want to report on. The first two are just recognition of people who are here tonight in the audience. The first one is, I would like to recognize Joe McInerney. Joe, do you want to come up? Joe currently serves on our Airport Authority and also is the Chair of the Airport Authority, and his term expires in March. And so I wanted to present him with a certificate of grateful appreciation for 16 years of service to the HL Sunny Callahan Airport and the Fairhope community. Joe has been the Chair of the Airport Authority since 2015 and has served for 16 years. Anytime you serve something in city government for that long, it's because it's your passion. I mean, he truly has a love for the airport and for Fairhope, and we just really appreciate his service and, and just we're honored to have him representing Fairhope on the Airport Authority. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody who's been a part of the airport for the last 15 years for me, starting with Colton Coyle, who brought me into it, Chuck Zunk, who had the vision to work with the FAA to get $11 million of FAA funding to expand the east side, Kyle Plimmer with Continental Motors, who taught me everything I know about aviation, and then the board, who served with me for the last five years. I think they've done a great job and done some good things. Going forward, the airport's future is ahead of it. We, you saw that economic study that we provided, almost $30 million of economic activity for the city, 280 jobs, and that's not counting the $5 million of new investment that's going to happen in the next three months, three to six months. So thank you.
Thank you, Joe. The other person that I'd like to recognize who's also in the audience is Kim Barmeister. Kim, would you please come up? Kim, as most of you know, has worked for the city for, Kim, how long have you been with the city?
Twenty-three plus years.
Twenty-three plus years. And Kim is a bulldog at her job. So I'm so glad that she was actually recognized by Mobile Bay Monthly as a, for a, she was given a watershed award, Mobile Bay's annual honors, recognizing environmental guardians of our community. Kim, if anybody has dealt with Kim, they know she's an environmental Nazi. And she is, it's the truth. I'm not saying anything that nobody else says. But one thing that I just love by, by reading what they said about Kim, it says, "At the end of the day, I think all of us want the same thing," she says, "clean water to drink, to play in, and creeks that remain wild and beautiful." Kim makes sure that our, our environment is protected, and she does that on behalf of the city while she's out there enforcing her codes. So Kim, thank you for what you do. Thank you for representing, representing the city with integrity and loving our environment and doing the things that nobody else wants to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So it's always nice when you get to honor employees with awards like that that the community recognizes, so I'm glad to be able to do that. The other thing I just wanted to mention is this week was the first time that we have met collectively the mayors of Bowlin County with the Bowlin County Commission. One thing that I'll be bringing to the, to the, to the city council next week is they are actually going to be applying for some GOMESA funding to do a Bowlin County recycling facility, and they are asking each municipality to endorse that concept. There's still some more information to come, but I do have some information that I'll be placing in your boxes for you to review, also getting with Dale Lender and Mr. Johnson to go over what we're currently doing and just making sure that their facility is going to meet our needs before we move forward on that. Thank you.
Mayor, I believe the chief might want to.
And the chief is next, that's right. Got so excited with my words, I almost forgot you.
Thank you, council and mayor, for allowing us to be here and use its time to publicly recognize two outstanding members of our department. Their recognition is way overdue, but nonetheless very, very important. Tonight, we'll be honoring two officers for their exceptional service to our community. The first officer I'd like to honor is Officer Trent Coley. We're going to award, give them their awards, and then we'll go outside and take pictures. On May 30th, 2020, Officer Trent Coley responded to a medical assist call for a cardiac arrest. Officer Coley quickly arrived and found a man who was, who had collapsed, was not breathing, no pulse, and unresponsive. Officer Coley immediately coordinated a response that included gathering vital information and beginning CPR. In an effort to save this man's life, Officer Coley performed CPR for an extended amount of time, not giving up, and as a result, he was able to get a pulse and respiration back multiple times. Once additional personnel arrived, Officer Coley continued to assess the subject's condition and give guided direction. It is because of Officer Coley's quick response, decisive actions, and lifesaving knowledge and relentless efforts, this gentleman survived. Officer Coley's dedication to duty and personal commitment to the service of this community are consistent with the highest of public service, and for his actions, he is hereby awarded the lifesaving award. And I'd also like to note, also, I think it's important to let everyone know that Officer Coley came to our department as an advanced EMT, and he's currently serving on the Fairhope volunteer for our department.
God bless you.
The second officer I'd like to honor is Officer Kevin Conroy. On May 1st, 2020, police dispatch received a report of a major vehicle accident on Green Hill Road. Within minutes of the call being dispatched, officers arrived on scene. Upon arrival, Officer Kevin Conroy immediately took notice and realized that one of the vehicles was on fire, and the fire was intensifying. Officer Conroy immediately advanced to the driver's side door of the vehicle where the victim was. He realized the driver was in extreme pain, and she was entrapped due to the injuries to her right ankle. Officer Conroy quickly assessed the situation, and it was his belief that the victim was at risk of death by burning or from smoke inhalation. With the fire spreading closer to the victim, he made a split-second decision and pulled the victim from the burning vehicle. It is because of Officer Conroy's decisive actions and disregard for his own personal safety, he prevented further injury to the victim and possibly saved her life. Officer Conroy's dedication to duty and personal commitment to the service of this community are consistent with the highest of public service. Officer Conroy is hereby awarded the lifesaving award. Again, thank you for allowing the police department to, the opportunity to come up here and publicly share these commendations, not only with you, but with our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anything else, Mayor Sullivan? All right, next item on tonight's agenda will be public participation for agenda items. If you would like to address the council tonight on agenda items, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. You will be given three minutes. If you would like to speak to the council concerning non-agenda items, you will have another opportunity at the conclusion of tonight's meeting.
Is this nomination one of those, I mean, I can speak to that now?
Yes, sir, you can.
Francis Rip, 22985 High Ridge Road, the Rip Report. Two weeks ago, everybody found out Robert Brown quit, knowing that he gave any type of notice or anything. The family property he purchased, he purchased in July of last year during the election. So him moving out of town, he knew in July last year. Then, when he quits, he nominates Jay Robinson, you jump all over it. If you look at the minute, the meeting, it looks as if that was unanimous done deal right there. How do you think that looks to the citizens of the community? Nobody discussed anything with them. None of the candidates that I know that ran were asked what they thought. It's not fair. You're taking an oath of office representing the citizens of Fairhope. You're not doing that by this process. Jay very well may be the best qualified, and he might ultimately, in something like that, come out on top. But you didn't give anybody any opportunity, and it's going to look very, very suspicious. And there was no public participation. I'm the first one to speak to. And that's after the fact. You start out with the nomination, then you do the oath of office? Come on, man. Seriously. Jack, you said just a minute ago, and you're right, I made this decision, and you're right, you did make this decision. You made this decision long ago, before two weeks ago. Guarantee you that.
You're so ill-informed. It's obvious. You know, first assumption, your first assumption you're making is that, you know, Robert Brown, we don't know when he purchased the property, and he's a builder.
I'll give you the probate number. I'll give you the probate number. July 21st. Of last year.
As I said, sir, I didn't know that, but not only that, he's a builder. He builds houses and sells them.
This was the family home that he spoke to, that he purchased. So I know this, and you, none of you guys knew this.
All right, your three minutes is up. Thank you, sir.
You got a bet.
Yes.
Hello. I'm Gina Littlepage. I'm here to talk about item number 22. I'm a board member of the Bowlin County Trailblazers, and we've asked that you all allow us to participate or to host an event called Chalk the Walk, and I just wanted to make myself available if anyone has any questions. It's a, it's a fundraising event for the Bowlin County Trailblazers, but it's primarily just to raise awareness of our organization. So Molly Spain could not be here this evening, so I'm here if anyone has any questions. It's slated for April 24th.
Does anybody have any questions? It's pretty straightforward. I think, I don't think you're going to have any problem.
Okay, good. Thank you all. Have a nice evening.
You can stick around if you want to wait for item 22, or?
Well, I think that's why I came up here, so I'm going to go on home. But thank you all very much.
I don't, I don't suspect any surprises. Anyone else?
Good evening. Joshua Gammann, 20545 Flower Drive, Fairhope. First, congratulations, Councilman. Well-earned. I would have hated to have had to choose between you and Cory running for that seat if you had ran. That would have been a real tough vote for me. I also wanted to say, I don't think it's been acknowledged enough, but Councilman Brown, former Councilman Brown, I think he did a really honest thing. You hear about it in national politics and state and local all the time, people not living where they're supposed to be. You know, he did an honest thing by saying, hey, look, I don't live within the city limits anymore. Could very easily have just been hush-hush, had a P.O. box, and done whatever he wanted. You know, nobody would know any different, so I think that should be said. The last thing I want to say, unfortunately, I think, I think it's unfortunate that there wasn't public participation prior to the nomination, not that it would have changed the outcome in any way, but I think it's important for us to know as citizens what, what metrics are being used to choose leaders, especially with it being such an early resignation. You know, we're talking basically a full term here. And while I certainly don't question the capabilities of Mr. Robinson here, I just think it's important that we come together as a community to discuss these things. I think the strength in our government is not in that our leaders take quick decisive actions all the time, it's that they engage in dialogue both publicly and privately with the citizens to know, you know, about big matters like this. So not just about, about this, but, you know, zoning regulations, all kinds of different things. So I just want to say thank you, and thank you for your service. I know this is no easy task, having jumped into the arena only very briefly. I, I know it's a, it's a tough place to be, and I thank you all, and I thank you again for your respect that all of you showed me during the election, especially Mr. Boone. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Patrick Brindle, 307 Woodbridge Circle. But this is in regards to item number 21 on the agenda, which is an application for a wholesale wine license. Just wanted to make myself available. I'm the one applying for it. I'm going to be wholesale distributing honey mead. It's a local honey, so if there's any questions, please let me know. I'll be right here, but if there's not, then I probably won't stick around, but just wanted to make myself available, so. It, it sounds more complicated probably than it is. I'm just going to be purchasing wine from a licensed manufacturer and selling it to licensees at restaurants here in Fairhope. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Suspect people you got on airs. I don't, I don't see any issues. We'll ask the police. She had to go out for some photographs. We typically will ask them, but I don't anticipate any issues there either, unless you just want to stick around for 20 items, or maybe not 20 now, but 15 items. Floor is still open. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'll close public participation on agenda items and remind everyone that you will have another opportunity to adjust the council at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Council comments? Councilman Martin?
You know, before I was elected, I just got to get this off my chest, before I was elected, I was a citizen like most people here in Fairhope, and it's so easy to stir the pot and, and, and a lot of people don't have time to do diligence on what we do up here. But everything that we do up here, what I've learned since I've been behind the veil, is by the book, and we follow the Constitution. I must apologize if people in the citizenship thought that we should have had the comments first. I'll take that apology. We can do better. We learn as we live. But as far as making accusations towards the people up here to doing something illegal, I think you need to get your ducks in a row before you do such things and make conspiracies. If you're not a part of the solution, then you're part of the problem. So I just, I just wanted to say that. I, I just had to, like, you know, because, you know, I was pointing at something, felt like I did something wrong or something. And we hadn't, you know, we followed the Constitution, we made a qualified decision, and maybe the order of things could have been better as far as public participation, and I will apologize for that. That's all I got.
Councilman Conyers?
I'll just say, welcome back to Councilman Robinson. Glad to have you up here. You're a great public servant. Hate to have Robert Brown no longer here, but, but we certainly got a good replacement. It's going to be a little weird getting used to you being way down on that side of the, side of the dice, but.
Wait, y'all like weekend?
I love Citrus Core. But it is going to be weird looking down there and not seeing Robert and seeing you in his place, so, welcome back.
Councilman Boone, I'm going to skip you right now, Councilman Robinson.
Well, I'm rather glad Councilman Robinson's sitting here to my right, and again, I have a soreness in the left shoulder. I think the job is well done. I truly believe our decisions are based on what's the best for Fairhope, and that man standing right, sitting right there is the best for Fairhope. That's all I got.
Councilman Robinson?
Thank you. Everybody take a seat. I got four months worth of stuff I need to get off my chest. But first, let me say this. Thank you to Councilman Martin, Councilman Conyers, Councilman Burrell, and Councilman Boone, for.
Boone for considering me for this opportunity. Jack was right. I didn't, I wasn't sure at first, but, you know, the more I thought about it, it's such an honor and a privilege to be able to do this job. Not many people get that opportunity. I haven't missed the turmoil that sometimes comes with it, but I've missed the people. I've missed the service. I've missed the involvement. So it was really a pretty easy decision for me to come back in the end. And, you know, I look forward to the next, you know, three and a half years of service with you guys and Mayor Sullivan in continuing to move the city in the right direction. I've got to thank Robert Brown for his four-plus years of service. Robert was always a class act, in my opinion, and had a way of saying things directly but politely that were difficult for some of the rest of us to get across. I will not be replacing Robert. He is irreplaceable, but I will do my best to honor his seat and do the best I can in this position. And last, I want to say a little bit about me personally and me not running. I think that warrants some explanation at this point. You know, we as elected officials have to decide in July of the, prior to the election cycle if we're going to run or not. If you go back to July of 2020, there was a lot going on. We were in the middle of a pandemic. My wife was fairly newly pregnant with our fourth child, unexpectedly, I might say. Yes, we do now that happens. And for those that don't know, my wife has a history of health scares. And so there was a lot for me to contemplate at that point in time. You know, juggling life with a fourth child, the balance between work, city council, and a fourth child and a sixth family member. You know exactly how my wife would do during that pregnancy and how she would respond. And with so many uncertainties at that time, I didn't feel comfortable making the commitment that it takes to serve in this position. And it is a big commitment, and it is a huge responsibility, and not one that you should take lightly. And because of that, I decided it was best not to run again. And it's been eight months since then, and in that time, I've got a healthy and gorgeous five-month-old baby girl.
God bless.
A healthy and, I guess I can say, happy wife. She might disagree with the happy part. And we've adjusted to life as a family of six. You know, you figure these things out, and we have, and we have a very comfortable work-family balance, so that I did feel comfortable when asked to consider taking this position, that I was able and willing to make that commitment. And so to those of you that have asked me, that's the whole story. And I just look forward to being able to serve. I look forward to finishing Robert's term, and I look forward to all the great things that we have coming in the next four years. And so I appreciate it. Thank you all for your kind words earlier. Thank you to those that have reached out to me today, and I guess in the past couple of weeks since my name was first mentioned. I just appreciate it all, and I look forward to getting to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. I'm gonna go back and address some of those comments a little earlier against my better judgment, but it, you know, it upsets me that we're getting accused of things up here, as Councilman Martin said. You know, I don't know when Robert Brown bought the land. I don't care. It's none of my business. I know one thing, that, you know, there was a long time that transpired, even if it's true as to when he bought it. I simply do not know when he bought it. I do know that it was after the election that he mentioned to me the possibility of moving out of town. Robert builds houses for a living. He could have built a house. He could have sold it. He could have built that house and not moved into it. He could have rented it. He could have bought that house and not sold the house he's currently in. And he could have bought another house in town while he, or rented a house in town while he's waiting to finish another house. There were, that's why Robert Brown waited until he did to make the announcement that he was going to resign. Did I know something about it? Of course I did. We're not, we're not in the dark up here. We don't, we don't live in a vacuum. We, we know what's going on most of the time. But it's not up to us to tell it. You don't break some news like that, because had Robert decided to sell that house, rent that house, if he had not been able to sell his house, you don't make that announcement and then that not happen. That's too big a news to speak to unless you know. So there were a lot of uncertainties going on with that. So, you know, he even thought about, you know, being annexed into the city by the legislator. That was an option. There were a lot of options on the table. So nobody up here knew exactly what was gonna happen, including Robert. Robert didn't know exactly how that was gonna turn out. So we follow the rule. He announced his resignation at the time that he saw fit, and that's only up for him to decide when he saw fit. We announced it. You know, another thing I don't want to do is yank anybody's chain and start, you know, you know, talking to people or interviewing people when I knew that Robert had, he mentioned to all the council members that he was going to resign. He told me. I didn't call any of the other council members, but he told me that when he called them to tell them that, every person on the council mentioned Jay Robinson's name. Didn't even know if it was a possibility. And I think there was some time that passed before I even called you to even ask you about that. So, you know, I could sit there and go through a dog and pony show and pretend, but if I know in my mind that the person that I feel is the best available candidate is available, I'm not gonna waste somebody's time and patronize them. Why do that, you know? Just for an act? Just for show? So anyway, that's a little bit of that to some of the nonsense that, you know, we put up with for years, and apparently, and I've put up with for a little bit longer, but I want to set the record straight. Sometimes I get a little tired of that. Sometimes I get very tired of that. So we'll move on beyond that. Needs to be a happy day. Should be a very happy day. The citizens of this city should be very happy that we got a fine candidate such as Jay to serve the people. With that, I'll close council comments, and I'll move to item seven, which is final adoption of an ordinance to amend ordinance number 1266 and to repeal and replace ordinance number 1608 in the Fairhope Code of Ordinances concerning Article Six, garbage and trash collection and disposal rates. This was introduced at the February 22nd, 2021 city council meeting. Council, you should have this in your package. Did you like, would you like Mr. Johnson to go over these rates again? I know that we talked about them for about, I think, probably 45 minutes to an hour in two separate work sessions. We talked about them briefly in the last meeting, and you have the information in front of you. Basically, the rate will go from $15.80 to $20 per month for residential and to $25 per month for the commercial customers. The handicap accessible service was, the price was not going to change.
Make a motion. Will you approve the ordinance?
Second. We have a motion for final adoption in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, will you call a question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Abstaining.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number eight is an ordinance relating to the issuance of the Fairhope Authority, Airport Authority's Improvement Refunding Bond Series 2021 and Authorizing Mayor Sherry Sullivan, the City Treasurer, or any other officer of the city to execute, seal, attest, and deliver on behalf of the city the funding agreement and other documents as may be necessary and appropriate in connection with the sale by the authority of the Series 2021 bond. We have bond counsel, Mr. Preston Bolt. Clerk, for the record, I'm abstaining from this vote. We can't have somebody introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce.
Okay.
Mr. Council President, I know that you mentioned in the work session that we may need to consider immediate consideration on this item, and I'll go ahead and move for immediate consideration.
All right, we have a mo, I think that I can move, I can vote for immediate consideration, right, clerk? As long as I'm not voting for any adoption of that. I believe that would be appropriate. If you're only voting to have a vote.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion to move for immediate consideration. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Clerk, will you call a question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Bolt.
Thank you. Counsel, I'll be very brief. This is a repeat of something you did in 2017, a refunding of an existing debt. It will extend the debt to 2028 at a rate of 1.14%. You will have, so you have that rate for that long. If you choose, you can pay it off starting in 2025. The purchaser of the bond is Trustmark National Bank, and what you are doing is approving a funding agreement whereby you will back the debt service as you are doing for the 2017 bond that the Airport Authority will take out. They will be voting hopefully tomorrow on that, and will close next week if everything goes according to forehand. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, council? We also have Joe McInerney here, if you have any questions, and also Kim, the treasurer, can answer questions.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, you have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Clerk, will you call a question?
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number nine is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sherry Sullivan to execute a contract with one of the city of Fairhope and the Baldwin County Trailblazers for an appropriation of $5,000 to support the Smartwalks and the walking school bus program. These were part of our community development grants that were approved in the budget, so I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item number 10 is a resolution to reject all bids for the municipal pier utility trade repairs rebid for the Public Works Department pursuant to the Code of Alabama and to allow the staff to make the needed repairs by establishing a force account project for reinstalling the needed utilities. The one bid that was received on the rebid was 152539, and we're being asked by staff to reject this bid. So I'll entertain a motion to reject the bid.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, we'll have an opportunity to fund that work on item 18. Item number 11 is a resolution. The city council approves the selection of the International Code Council to perform construction plan review of the proposed public site at the corner of State Highway 181 and State Highway 104 for the Building Department, hereby authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to execute a contract with a not-to-exceed amount of $9,784.99. I believe Eric gave us the details on this in the work session. Do you have any questions, Ram?
Make a motion. We approve as presented.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number 12 is a resolution. The city council approves the selection of Warren Everett Technology Group to perform professional IT network consulting services and hereby authorizes procurement of these services, where they cost of $23,100 pursuant to the Code of Alabama. And I know that Jeff is there, but I think I might be able to handle this. This was just, I think you were briefed on this last week. This was some highly technical IT consulting that we weren't able to perform in-house, and Jeff rarely does that, but this is one of those rare moments that we need to seek outside IT consulting. Did I get that right, Jeff?
Yeah, that sounds correct.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the selection.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 13 is a resolution that a 2016 Caterpillar 236D Skidsteer is declared surplus, and the mayor and city treasurer are hereby authorized and directed to dispose of personal property owned by the city of Fairhope by one of the following methods. One, accepting the fair market value trade-in of $17,000 from Thompson Tractor Company as part of a replacement purchase of a new 279D3 and PC 206B. Or, two, receiving bids for such property via gov deals sold to the highest bidder, provided however the city councils have the authority to reject all bids when its opinion deems the bids to be less than adequate consideration for the personal property. If I recall, we were gonna say receiving bids with a minimum bid of $17,000? Can we, can I just add that language now? Receiving bids with a minimum bid of $17,000 for such property via gov deals.
And council president, and at least in the resolution I'm reading, it does have that, is that we would set the reserve price at $16,999. So when we list it, if we didn't get the $17,000, then we'd go back to option one, which was to take the trade-in. So we want to make sure that the minimum we get is $17,000.
I see that now. Yeah, it was, it is in the resolution, council. I was just reading from the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, when it says A or B, who, are you gonna put it on gov deals? I mean, you're gonna go straight to B?
And I wrote this thing for Lisa, and it sounded brilliant when I wrote it, and then I read it a minute ago, and it doesn't make any sense. What we're saying is that the recommended is the worst we should do is $17,000. So the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna list it for two weeks on government deals with a reserve price of $16,999. So the first bidder has to bid $17,000. If we do better than $17,000, great. If it fails to meet reserve and doesn't sell, then we would take the fair market trade-in of $17,000.
Got it.
So it.
I might argue that the reserve price is $16,999, and somebody could buy for that, but we won't split hairs on that.
But you gotta bid.
You gotta bid.
No, you can bid. Reserve price is $16,999.
Well, see, I thought I was brilliant when I wrote this. So I'll give you the dollar if it sells for $16,999. Thank you.
Okay, so it's not an either-or. It's gonna be a B followed by an A if it's not, if it doesn't meet the reserve. Anyone wanna make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Clerk, will you let it be known that you would pursue Section 2B before pursuing A?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 14 is a resolution. The city of Fairhope votes to procure a CAT 279D3 XPS High Flow Compact Track Loader, also known as a Skidsteer, and a 24-inch Caterpillar PS306B cold planer for the Public Works Department and Utilities. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the Sourcewell Contract, and it has been nationally bid. Therefore, it does not have to be let out for bid. The cost will be $96,655, or if we trade in the prior mentioned equipment, it would be $79,655 with the trade-in. I'll entertain a motion for the purchase. This is a budgeted item, by the way, council.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I did not... I do see it. I couldn't find the green sheet.
That's the green sheet.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 15 is a resolution, the City approves the procurement for a new roof for the office wing of the Pecan Street Building for the Public Works Department. RFQ number 11-21 was sent to 23 contractors, was posted on the city website and in the public utilities building lobby. The city received three responses and awards the project to Roof Doctors of Alabama in the amount of $38,500. One quick question, Richard, are these repairs, are these repairs due to Hurricane Sally or just for building renovations?
We did get insurance coverage. That was, the adjuster did do that. And we will, I mean, but some of it was deferred maintenance. The roof is leaking much worse than it was.
Right.
But this is just kind of part of the budget improvements to get that finished space, that building where it doesn't leak water through the roof. And this is a complete metal roof replacement as well as the insulation.
Any questions, Mr. Johnson?
I've got a question on just the budget. Is, is the reason there's such a wide variance, is that because we're just doing one, one wing of it? Or how did, how did that just have to be such a wide gap?
Just so you know, the, why are there variance in the prices? I don't know. That, that one highway...
Well, and the budgeted price.
No, one, it says a budget of 150.
And Mayor, may I speak to that? This, I know we're working on with Symbol and some other things for some ultimate use, so there's more money budgeted. This is just the first phase of getting the building from leaking so that we can rehab and use space inside of it.
Okay.
The 100,000 is what we've budgeted. That's for some office renovations.
That's for all of Pecan Building, not just for the roof?
Yes. The roof is the one piece that's ruined.
I'm with you.
The renovation to the walls, to the office spaces.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions, counsel? Okay, we have a motion in a second.
No, you do not.
We don't have a motion in a second. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve roof repairs.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. I guess wrong every time, Lisa. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the repairs, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, thank you, counsel. Item 16 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope votes to procure one unbudgeted industrial-sized hot water heater. Let me tell you, this is a big one. To replace the failed unit for the rec department, the item is available for direct procurement through the NCPA, National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, which has been nationally bid. Therefore, it does not have to be let out for bid. The total cost will be 9,775, which includes delivery. Pat, does it include installation?
No, sir.
Will we do that in-house?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is for the pool heater, by the way, so a rather large tub.
That's correct. It's for the showers and the bathrooms in the pool.
Oh, all of them, showers, bathroom, and pool?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, not the pool itself. I meant bathrooms for the pool.
Oh, okay. Well, then I don't know that it is that, but yeah, okay. Men's and women's bathrooms and all that.
Correct.
Showers, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. All right, I'll entertain a motion to purchase the hot water heater.
So moved.
Second. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 17 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope votes to procure Lexi Pole Solutions Policy Software for the Police Department from Lexi Pole LLC as sole source distributor and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama. The cost will be 47,198.70. And Jeff, our chief, if we would like a little help on this one again. It's pretty cool looking.
You just want to know a little bit more about what Lexi Pole does? The company provides fully developed state-specific policies to the department. They are well-known throughout the nation. It's used a lot here in the state of Alabama. We have two agencies that are using them here in Baldwin County. They're, the policies are backed by research. They are written by subject matter experts and attorneys. And what, what we're, what we're facing right now is our, our policies are outdated. We are operating off of 2004 and some 2014 policies. Writing policies is very labor-intensive, and when you don't have enough staff to designate someone to do that full-time, this is where we started reaching out to, to get some help. With the police reforms that are coming down the pipes, we're just trying to get ahead of the game here and make sure that our policies are where they need to be and not wait till it's something that's absolutely necessary.
Will it be all-encompassing? Are they going to review all of our policies and procedures, every one of them?
They will. They will review all of our policies. They will make sure that we are using best practices, that we're following state and federal guidelines. And then we will also have our own policies that we can customize to what we need here in Fairhope. But they will make sure that we are covered under all the other, the big, the big things that are coming down.
I'm sure they'll come to you and say, this is kind of unique to your town. We need your...
Absolutely. They, what they will do is they will help us write these policies, and then they will turn around and we will have a committee that will get together and make sure that they fit what our, what our city is looking for, what our city needs, but also making sure that, that we are following the state and federal guidelines of the law.
Where the, will there be a council member on that committee?
I really haven't thought that far.
I think that's me. That's me.
You're the police liaison?
Yeah, that's me. Yeah, so I've read this. This is a good deal, Jack, I must say. I've read this all.
I'm not worried about the money. I just make sure that somebody has to pass the laws. It's instrumental in writing new policy and procedure.
Yeah, there's a mental health part to this as well that I really appreciate. There's also, the only thing I had a question was as far as the annual subscription. It's about 14 a year.
That's correct.
Yeah. So is it, are they going to, is that fade away? Or how, that doesn't go any higher?
No.
Do we set that in? Do we lock that in?
It's not, it's not locked in, but it, they didn't say it doesn't increase.
They did say that.
No, they did not. They did not say it would, but that is, you look at that, the way I look at this is $14,000 is a lot cheaper than adding another person to the payroll. And what that person's going to do is constantly keep us updated on what the policy should read.
Right. I think it's worth it.
All right, very good. Any questions for the chief? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to procure the solutions policy software.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. So chief, just one last question. So really, the, the software kind of is misleading. It's, it's almost, it's not just software, right? You're going to have, you know, you're going to have consultants, you're going to have real people helping you with the writing of this?
That is correct.
So it's not just something you're loading onto your computer and it's writing it for you.
And that's correct. We're going to have consultants that we're going to speak to, probably on a daily basis until this is actually done. It could take anywhere from three to six months to get this completed, this project completed. Another thing that it does, it is software. It will allow us to put our policies out to our officers where they can pull it up on, on the, online. And then also, we can test on this as many times a week as we want to. So we're going to be constantly pushing this information out to our officers who are always going to be reading it and staying up to date on what the policy is. And then they also, also will test on it. So there will be no reason for them not to know, you know, what the policy is. So it's kind of a training tool as well. We're constantly using that as a training.
Excellent. Clerk, we do have a motion in a second this time.
Yes, you do.
Okay. All right, counsel, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item 18 is a resolution to award the procurement of an Enduro Utility Tray and Incidental Hardware for the repair of damages of utilities at the municipal pier caused by Hurricane Zeta to Mathis of Alabama Electric Supply Company with a total unbudgeted cost of $31,568.36 with a not to exceed price of $50,000 and to proceed with the work being done under a force account project. So what the force account project means that we'll be doing that work in-house. And I assume the $50,000 to cover the other supplies that we will need, such as conduit and things such as that, right? Cabling, okay. Folks, I can't tell you, this is, other than the appointment of Councilman Robinson, this is my favorite thing on the agenda. It's been, it's been necessary, and I know people have been waiting on it for a long time. And the mayor's working on some other items to get that marina cleaned up out there right now. So I'll entertain a motion to award the procurement of the utility tray.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 19 is a resolution, the City Council authorizes a one-time appropriation of $15,000 paid in six-monthly installment starting March 9, 2021 for the exclusive use of the Fairhope Airport Authority to enter into a professional services agreement with URG Consulting LLC, AKA Jason Wilson. The scope of the professional services provided by URG to the Airport Authority shall include but not be limited to airport management, which will be marketing the airport and properties, business development, community relations, and stakeholder representation, aviation support, including local police, airport rescue, and firefighting coordination, and FBO development, fiscal management, budgeting, forecasting, capital program funding with FAA and ALDOT, and alternative funding opportunities such as grants, looking at insurance and risk management. We covered this, I know I covered this in the work session with the help of Councilman Martin, and also in the previous work session, we covered this. And the whole idea is to find someone qualified to help, I guess, move, move the Airport Authority into the next chapter of their existence and also to help wean the Airport Authority off the city. But it's been pointed out to me, you know, that the Airport Authority is there to promote aviation within, within our community and actually within our region, if you want to look at it that way. So, you know, we, we have high hopes and hope that great things will happen. If we are successful with this, and I have every reason to believe that we will be, we can, we can greatly reduce the city's dependency. And Lee, you may not get so many opportunities to refund $6 million bonds in the future, but hey, it'll be all right.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the one-time appropriation.
So moved.
So moved.
Two, two motions in three seconds, I believe. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Just so you know, counsel, that will be, the Airport Authority has a special called meeting tomorrow afternoon, if any of you want to attend. This will be on the agenda. There's a grant, I think the application is due at the end of this month, so we really need to get that going. And there's the funding, the bond issuance that was discussed earlier that will be on the agenda, and there's some other items. So I encourage you to be there tomorrow afternoon. I'll be, I'll be right here in this room tomorrow afternoon, and I believe it's at 5:00 tomorrow. So if you want to find out more about the Airport Authority, we're not done with Airport Authority business yet, though we've still got one more item on tonight's agenda concerning the Airport Authority. All right, did we vote, Mayor? We did, didn't we?
Yes.
Lisa, yes, we did.
Okay, sure. I get to talk. Item 20 is a resolution, the City Council hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan into a two-month rental agreement with Eastern Shore Parents Aquatic Foundation, doing business as SWAT for certain limited use of the city's municipal pool facility. The limited use shall be for five contiguous swim lanes from 3:30 PM to 5:15 PM and four contiguous lanes from 5:15 PM to 7:00 PM Mondays through Fridays, beginning either March 15 or March 22, 2021. The monthly rental fee shall be $500, and each swimmer shall have a Fairhope Municipal Pool membership. ESPAF shall name the city as an additional insured on its policy and shall execute a hold harmless indemnity agreement with the city, and any and all recreation department activities shall take priority over any ESPAF use of the facility. The rec department will give them a 48-hour notice of any potential conflicts. Mayor Sullivan, you would also be authorized to agree and execute up to four one-month extensions of the agreement at the same terms and conditions without further approval by the council. So counsel, this is all, it comes down to, these people lost their facility in Hurricane Sally and Daphne, and they need a place to train these young swimmers. And we tried to come up with a, a fair rental price as opposed to going the franchise agreement route. We also wanted to make sure that it did not interfere with the Fairhope Rec Department activities. We were told at these times of the day, rarely more than two or three people in all are at the pool, so they would have plenty of lanes to swim in, and this would not interfere with it. So it is available for use, and we felt it was a fair price. We didn't want to set a precedent of setting it too low or too high. But, and the additional one-month extensions is they don't know when they'll be back in their facility. We didn't want to get it on the council agenda, say, every two weeks or every month later in the year. Any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions? I'm going to make one more comment. So, you know, moving forward, the rec board's also working on rental agreements for soccer fields and other recreational facilities. We haven't come to a consensus yet, and we're still working on that, maybe moving away from franchise agreements and more into leases. Most important of which will not, we're working on exclusivity. We don't want to give people leases in which they say, you can't use this field, you know, I have this rented for the next four months or something, when they're only using it for maybe an hour a day. So we're working on some details. We expect to hear more from the rec board on that, so.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion in a second on the table. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item 21 is an application for a wine wholesaler license. It's for table wine only, and a wine importer license for, by Patrick Brendel, doing business as East Hill Distributors LLC, located at 358 Greenoe Road South in Fairhope, Alabama. Chief, do you see any reason to deny this application?
Yes, sir.
All right. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the application.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Say good luck in your business, sir. Okay, there being no further questions or discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for your patience, too. Item 22 is a request from Molly Spain requesting permission to use the parking lot and sidewalk near Orange Street for a Baldwin County Trailblazer event. This is the chalk art event along the sidewalks on April 24, 2021, with a backup rain date of April 25, 2021, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. It's mainly an awareness event to get people out on the trails. April 24, 2021 is National Trails Day. Chief, or I don't know if Jessica's still here, any reason to deny this application? Okay. All right, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 23 is a request of Marissa Gill requesting permission for Eddie Gill and the Journey for a Cause Initiative to use one of the Fairhope Dock Slips for an evening. One day, as the group passes through Fairhope, this initiative was launched in order to support diversity and inclusion in boating, fishing, and outdoor industries. The anticipated date of arrival is yet to be determined. So this people reached, this, this group reached out to the Fairhope Docks and other mayor's office, and I think most of the council members, if not all of you, should have received mayor's office, and I think most of the council members, if not all of you, should have received this letter. This is African-American gentleman is trying to raise awareness of boating among, and just to raise awareness to diversity and inclusion in boating and fishing and outdoor activities. The slip would not be in use for this one night stay, as they're gonna continue their journey around the United States. Councilman Martin, I know that you were pretty excited about this. You wanna address this?
No, I think it's great, you know. You know, my son did the sunfish, selling lessons at the yacht club, so it's good to see African-Americans coming to the pier and the docks and learning how to sail and do other things with the boating. I'm glad to see it. It tickles my heart.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to grant the permission.
Same move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of granting the request, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 24, Airport Authority Appointment and Reappointments. The nominees, the mayor makes these nominees, the appointment would be for Mr. Lee Shelton. If you don't know Mr. Shelton, would you stand up, please? Short guy over here. He would be nominated for a term that ends March of 2027. And reappointments are Vince Booth for a term ending March 2023, Frank, also known as Chip Groner, for a term ending March 2025, and myself as the council liaison and member for a term ending March 2027. And I will say that if I was appointed and was not in office beyond the current, my current term as a council member, I would, of course, resign that position and allow whomever on the council to, you know, that's selected to take my place. Also, Mr. Booth has been serving a term that would have started at March 2017. He's been filling that because no one else was appointed to fill that position, and the same for Mr. Groner. He is serving a term that would have been reappointed in March 2019, but no one was appointed to fill that position, so he carried on in that position. So to keep the staggering correct, we kept the ending dates of those uncompleted terms the way that they should have been to begin with. So I will entertain a motion to appoint the nominee and the reappointments.
Same move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I just wanna say, if you don't know Mr. Lee Shelton over here, he's a Vietnam veteran, was an Air Force pilot. I'll let him tell you a little bit more about himself if he so chooses. He's pretty humble, but he flew the most advanced aircraft ever created up until its day. Can I say it, Lee? He was a, he was an SR-71 Blackbird Pilot, which has the unofficial speed record for, I guess, powered air flight, if you don't count missiles in that, you count just aircraft. So, so he was part pilot, part astronaut, and part maybe secret agent man, we don't know. He can't tell us about that, so I think, I think he will serve us well.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion in a second, right? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, congratulations, Lee. And to Vince and Chip as well.
So, Jack, real quick, since we're on the airport, Jason Wilson is here. I'd like him to stand up.
Please.
Yep, Jason, stand up, wave to everybody. That's Jason with the contract.
Jason was the URG consulting that we just funded, the Airport Authority, to hire him as the consultant to move us into, although we're 21 years into it, to the 21st century.
That's right.
We're doing a good job, man. He's just gonna get on and do some more.
That's right.
Okay.
Very good.
Glad you're here tonight.
Very good.
Thank you. All right. Item 25 was added. I'll read this resolution for you. This was the amended agenda item. It says, be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope that the City Council approves the following temporary job position, the job description and pay grade for the same. This would be for the position of horticulturist with a grade of pay of 24S. Also say the position will sunset on the date of the current horticulturist supervisor's retirement, but not longer than eight months, whichever occurs first. I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
Same move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Just wanna say, I appreciate Paul giving enough heads up and Richard jumping on this and trying to come up with a plan so that we're not left in a lurch, 'cause that's a pretty big job in Fairhope. Really appreciate both of them taking some initiative to be proactive.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Before we get to public petition, participation, I know that the mayor recognized, where did Joe go?